School committee meeting of January 18, 2020 to order. The time is 5:31. And the first item on the agenda is budget budgets.
Budget budgets. 21 of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, we are nation under God and in this one with the thirteen nations.
So, next item, we just need to get a consensus, general consensus to ratify the agenda. No issues with the current agenda?
None.
Too long.
Role George will be played by John.
Yeah, exactly. So, the next item is we will go ahead and open the meeting for public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 Mashpee Public Schools budget. And we'll have a presentation by Superintendent DeBoer and the business manager, Paul Funk, if necessary, and then we'll be in public hearing until people no longer ask any more questions and we'll close it. Oh, here.
Mr. Chair, does that require a vote to open it up?
It does, a call. So, can I get, no, that's right, can I get a motion to open a public hearing? Something else?
Second.
Motion by Nicole and a second by Chris. Don, any vote?
I just have a question. I noticed that we have some new audience members that attended.
We can't change the agenda.
We did talk about that earlier.
It's good for the student council to see what a budget process looks like. In one of these days, you'll be doing this.
Nice question.
How do you vote, Don?
Who seconded?
Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right.
So, good evening, everyone. This is an opportunity for me to review what is currently considered superintendent's budget for FY '21. It has not been voted upon by the school committee until our next meeting, which is the 22nd, I believe. And we are, I have a budget narrative that goes along with it that's basically going to guide my brief conversation so that if anyone has questions, we leave enough time for that. Our budget for FY '21 is a level service budget and it totals $23,493,179. Using an offset from the school choice program funds of $538,865, we are requesting an appropriation from the town of Mashpee of $22,954, I did that same thing at the budget meeting, $22,954,314, which represents a three and a half percent increase over the amount that we were provided last year by the town of Mashpee. A lot of the work this year that, we prepare our budget quite a bit in advance and it does include sort of some assumptions for upgrades to our programming and trying to make sure we are able to meet the needs of all of our students. We did have a meeting on December 19th with the town manager and members of the finance committee, board of selectmen, one member representative to review this budget as well. And we will have other opportunities to go before town officials to further answer questions and explain anything in our budget that they have a question about. We are, in preparing the budget, we are assuming that our grants are staying at a level funded amount. So, when we break our budget into the categories of salaries for personnel and operating expenses, it generally runs about an eighty, well, this year, it's eighty-one percent of the budget goes into the operation of, goes into the personnel, all of the teachers, all of the support personnel that we need to meet our students' needs, and nineteen percent of our budget are for the operating expenses. The personnel budget for this year represents in total a 1.7% increase over last year's budget. And it does reflect known wage increases for one category of workers, which is Unit C, and it includes estimated salary increases for our larger groups of individuals, which is our teachers, which is a Unit A, and our assistant principals, which is, and directors, which is Unit B. On the operating side of the budget, it's an overall increase of 10%, and there's multiple categories within that. To note in that increase of 10%, we have $126,000 of technology upgrades that we currently have in our capital improvement program request to the town, and the town is aware that if that funding comes through under the capital improvement program, that we will remove $126,000 from this budget, which will reduce that percentage increase. And another assumption is that our enrollment is slightly declining. We are not assuming growth in enrollment. Mr. President, I don't know if you would want to add anything?
No, I think you've covered everything.
Does anyone, young or older, have any questions? Or comments? You can make comments. All of this information is posted on the district's website, and then once the school committee makes their decision on the 22nd, if there are any changes to the budget based on what they think or would like to see changed, then that will get updated as well. And then eventually, after we've gone through the process of meeting with the finance committee of the town and board of selectmen, and if there's any recommended changes from the town manager, that will be incorporated as well, and we're able to do that.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's John Miller.
Can you do me a favor and come up to the table with the mic so everyone at home can hear you?
My name's John Miller. I'm a member of the finance committee, but not representing it tonight. I was just curious, on the school choice number, how does that compare to last year's offset and what determines it?
You could talk about the number of last year's.
Last year, it was exactly the same.
Okay.
So, it's exactly the same. And it's kind of, when we build a budget, we have to almost ballpocket because we don't know how many really choice students are going to actually show up on September 1st. You want to keep in mind, this budget had to be submitted to the town by the end of September, which is very difficult to get real hot figures.
Has that number, has that value changed significantly from year to year then?
No, it hasn't. It really hasn't.
That's mainly.
Well, this year, we had a tick up in school choice enrollment.
By how much?
Sixteen students. Sixteen students.
Yeah, maybe sixteen students. I don't know. That might be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
It's pretty quiet. Anybody else? This is one of the few moments in the open meeting where we actually can have a back-and-forth discourse with the audience, so I was hoping for more than one person.
And we have a lot.
I know, we have a huge audience. McKay Auger, I know you have a comment.
But we're a hundred percent increase from last year's attendance.
That's true. That's true. Okay, if there's no other comments, we can get out of public hearing. Last chance, anyone? Yes, we can.
Thank you for letting us listen to this budget plan, see what we can somehow utilize it.
Do you remember the number? So, will I ask you tomorrow?
A lot. Twenty-seven something.
I have a question. I mean, I just want to get a clarification. Maybe I missed perfect, who said, in regard to contractual appropriations for personnel.
That the budget includes the known increases for Unit C, which includes our administrative assistants and all of our paraprofessionals. It includes an estimated increase for Unit A, which is all of our teachers and counselors. And then it also includes an estimated increase for all of Unit B, which includes assistant principals and directors, which we have run three of those.
I did not hear that.
And other non-Unit people, it's an estimated.
All right, hearing nothing else, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and open up.
Can you do that before 5:30 too?
Yeah.
You can. I didn't really give people the opportunity at work.
They can speak in public comment.
Good point.
We can get back to them in a later moment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take a moment to, a moment, a motion to close public hearing.
I move to close public hearing.
So, I got a motion by Chris and a second by Don. Any discussion, further discussion? Don, any votes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous. So, public hearing is closed. Thank you for, John, thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is public comment. So, do we have anyone for public comment? We do not. Enough for the fun part. All right, so Quasnet School shareout. Principal Mary Kate O'Brien, please take it away.
Good evening, everyone, and happy new year. Happy 2020. I am very proud and excited to be here with the sixth grade student council from Quasnet School. The student council is a leadership opportunity that we provide to the students, and what makes it special is all of the students behind me have been elected by their peers to represent them. So, they're a group of eighteen this year, and they come from all seven of the sixth grade classrooms. We're also very fortunate to have Mr. David Williams, who's a sixth grade teacher, be this group's advisor. He is an outstanding role model for our students. He is energetic, he's enthusiastic, he's smart, he's kind, and we're just thrilled that he's a part of this team. So, I want you to hear from them. They participated in a peer leadership program through MAR, which is Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Commission and out of Bridgewater State University, so they have a lot to share with you about their experience there and all of the work that they're doing to help build a positive climate and culture here at Quasnet. They are an outstanding group of students, so. You ready, guys? All right. I will let you take it away. Mr. Williams, did you want to share?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien, for the introduction, and I just want to echo a few things that she had said about the group of students that are in the sixth grade student council this year. They're very motivated, very dedicated to making this school and our community a positive place. They put in a lot of time, a lot of meetings, to come up with new ideas, new activities, new programs, and things to really build the community in their classrooms and in their school. So, I'm not going to take up too much time because I know they're excited to speak in front of you tonight, but I just wanted to acknowledge them and let you all know that they put in a tremendous amount of effort and time into what they do. So, I hope that you enjoyed their presentation this evening, and I know that they are very excited to share that with you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Clara. We are so delighted to have you here with us tonight. I am part of the sixth grade student council, and we have some of the things that we have done during this time, and we'd like to share that with you guys. Who are we? We are sixth graders who have been elected by our peers to represent our school. We promote the Falcon Fridays and positive leadership.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ella Plaza, and I'm here today to tell you about some things that we have accomplished as a student council and some things that we would like to accomplish. The mission of student council is to develop positive leadership and serve the student body and the community and the school. What we do as a student council is we attend leadership trainings to educate our peers. For example, we attended a MARC training at Bridgewater College, and we attended some conferences there about bullying. We like to promote positive school culture and spirit by doing bus greetings, which is we have a group of students that will go outside and greet people in the morning. We like to have spirit weeks, socials, and kindness sessions.
Okay, hello, everybody. My name is Gray Davis, and I will be telling you about the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, or as we like to call it, MAR. We have identified issues that sixth graders face today, and we want to stop, we want find a way to effectively solve those problems. And we have ident, one of those problems is bullying and cyberbullying, and we want to make a way, we want to find a way to make it safe online and have everyone make good choices. At that conference, we also broken into groups and brainstormed ideas to inform our students and our peers about those problems. And some of those ways is how to handle those situations, how to be accepting of others, and how to educate them about those problems. This is a picture of some of us broken into groups to brainstorm those ideas. What did we learn? Student, teachers, and parents need to be educated on the cyberbullying and social media apps that their parents are using, I mean, children are using, because things are always changing. And we want to make a difference by promoting kindness and letting people know, know like what to look for. And we can create programs and activities to spread information about the positivity to promote and accept, an accepting and positive environment in the school. This is in a, some more pictures of us broken into groups. And these are some of the ideas that we brainstormed. Pink Shirt Day, Black and White Day, Skits on Bullying and Cyberbullying, Buddy Day, Mix Up Lunch Days, and we will create cyber shows on bullying and cyberbullying to give information on our peers. Does anybody have any questions on these days, like what you do? Yes?
What we do on all those days. I mean, I get, I think I get Skits on Cyberbullying and maybe Buddy Day, but Mix It Up Lunch Days and Pink Shirt, Black and White, I'm not sure I know what those are.
Okay, so, like, Mix It Up Lunch Day, we were thinking, like, sixth graders could have lunch with the other grades. So, that's pretty much Mix It Up Lunch Days. Pink Shirt Day, we just wanted to celebrate, like, people, isn't that what I heard, like the story? This kid was being bullied, and he was wearing a pink shirt, and his friends wanted to support that kid that was wearing a pink shirt, so they made a day, Pink Shirt Day, to support that kid. Then Black and White Day is, like, back then, they had black and white movies, so everyone looked the same. So, we just wanted to celebrate that day where you wear black and white and you celebrate the, like, you were all different but same in some way.
Good evening. I'm McKay Auger, and I'm here to talk about some things that we've done. We've done bus greetings, as you know, and those are days where we go out, right to the school, and we say good morning. We have dance, music, and we use a lot of alliterations. Have a wonderful wintry Wednesday. We also have spirit weeks, which our spirit week committee does a great job on planning. Some of the eight days are Crazy Hair Day, Falcon Day, and Sports Day. And then we have the Acts of Kindness, which is the theme, kindness is the theme of the month of January for our district. It originally started out as our float for the Christmas parade, but now it's turned into the school event. Kindness goes round and round, just like a carousel. One small act of kindness leads to many others. Student council was interviewed by the newspaper, and our amazing school secretary, Ms. Emery, was interviewed by a radio station. We're going to start preparing for our kindness school, Quasnet School Kindness Dance on the 24th from six o'clock to eight p.m. in the cafeteria. So, as I said, kindness goes round and round. One small act of kindness leads to many more. We're going to celebrate our kindness month with the kindness week, which is a week, a spirit week, based on kindness, ending with the spirit week dance, or kindness, spirit week dance. And the Acts of Kindness will continue after because kindness is great and kindness makes a huge act. So, the kindness dance. Students need to, need to perform at least eight random acts of kindness, which they record on coupons, and then they send them in to student council. The coupons give them free access to our dance, and family members are welcome. Our goal is to reach at least a thousand acts of kindness. We'd love to have more, and it doesn't have to just be the kids. Parents can also do this, but they don't have to write them down on the coupons. We, as I said, our dance is on the 24th. Please come. There's going to be food, drinks, games, giveaways, prizes, music, crafts and crafts, activities, shows, random acts of kindness, maybe a skate or two, and a lot more. Any questions on the three slides?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Delia Dean-Fords. Now, kindness up to the dance, the kindness dance. So, what are we going to be doing for the kindness week, you may ask? Well, we were thinking about doing spirit weekdays leading up to the dance. So, some of those days we were thinking of were Pink Shirt Day, Black and White Day, and Falcon Friday, which there are many more that we've been thinking of and brainstorming. We're doing these to promote the positive reactions from our community. We want to build this, and we want to create a much more positive community than we have today. Now, we will also be doing other spirit week activities leading up to the dance, but these will be like surprises, like hidden gifts and hidden cards, just things that have good positive, like, like if you were saying, if you put a note in someone's locker saying, "Have a great day, you're amazing," that would make someone feel happy inside, and then you would feel happy because you did that. And if they got that, then maybe they would want to spread it and give another note to someone else. And as McKay said, it's a chain reaction. So, we will also be doing many other surprises. This is a picture of the student council on the Bridgewater field trip at the math and science building. We, the history of the building was so unique and it was amazing to learn. We learned so many things. Good night.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hayden, and I'm in the sixth grade student council, and this is us having lunch at the Bridgewater State Cafeteria, and this is us taking pictures and admiring some of the, like, statues of the former presidents of the college. And then us having lunch again in the small group, just talking at, like, the meeting. And I'm here to conclude this slideshow, and I hope you enjoy learning about what we've done as a student council and what we need to do, and thank you for your time.
So, just to sum it up, thank you so much and for giving this wonderful group of students a forum to come and speak and share all the good things they're doing. It really does make a difference when you see the kids outside. They're wearing their Mashpee shirts, and they are waving and holding the door, and it makes a difference. It just sets a different tone in the morning, and I can't wait for this next spirit week. Right before Christmas, they organized one, and it was just terrific, so come to the dance right before Christmas. So, thank you, everyone.
Can I ask you guys a question?
Yeah.
So, I'm curious what, so, this was great. I learned, so kindness week is the week of January 20th, so maybe you let us know what we can, what the adults, you know, that are communicating on social media, maybe we can advertise our acts of kindness and use a hashtag or something that you guys developed? Oh, you have one?
There is one as Kindness Carousel.
Kindness Carousel.
Hashtag Kindness Carousel.
Oh, okay. I didn't read my paper, though.
Hashtag Kindness Carousel.
Okay.
Do some kind act.
But I was so curious to hear about what can, so, I have a child that's in fifth grade. So, how did you, did you as fifth graders know about student council, and is that something that you knew sixth graders were done this, or when did you, how did you learn about student council and why did you decide to get involved and run?
May I say something?
You just have to speak into the microphone so we can hear you on TV.
So, we knew about student council in fifth grade, and then going into sixth grade, the teachers informed us about student council, and then if we wanted to be, if we wanted to be part of it, we would have to let our fellow peers know, and then we made a vote of the three people, of the two people we thought should be in student council. And then the office counted up the votes, and then on the loudspeaker announced the people that made it in. And then we have a board, which is vice president, president, secretary, and the treasurer, which after we got into student council, we could make speeches, and then in the cafeteria, when the whole sixth grade was there, we got to present our speeches, and then student council, the people who were running for the roles, they would do their speeches, and then the whole sixth grade would vote for the people that they thought would fit those roles.
I have a question about you. Everything I've heard is a prayer. Fantastic, and I commend you for doing this. I think there should be more kindness in the world if we could just spread it. And so, based on that, what legacy do you want to leave to the fifth graders, fourth graders, and third graders from your time on student council?
No matter what, just be kind. It doesn't matter if anyone's watching, just be kind.
That's not true. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. I just want to say that I love the enthusiasm from everybody that was up there speaking. Very well spoken. The ownership that you've taken in this project, you know, is, you know, very enlightening and encouraging to anybody that's going to watch this, and I'm sure everybody that's in the sixth grade class, even, even the grades above you, I'm sure, anybody that sees this or hears about this, is going to be very encouraged, and it's going to spread a lot of kindness, I'm sure. So, good job to all of you, and we look forward to seeing how things work out.
Yeah, congratulations on what you've accomplished so far. I'm really proud to be associated with you.
You got five advocates at this board to carry you, make sure you take care of to do this kind of stuff. I wish we could fill the entire agenda with these presentations, to be honest with you.
Don't forget to apply to, to apply for student mini-grants for any project ideas you might have. Okay, good.
Shameless block.
For their deals?
I don't think they applied for the dance. They applied for, they applied for sweatshirts for the, for greeting, but I believe, or I was told, PTO might have already contributed, so we're going to work with PTO to make sure we reimburse PTO. But then there are some other things that I heard talked about, certain signs that they might want to hold that send, send really good messages to kids, so we'll, we'll be taking care of them.
Maybe we can get your kindness week advertised on the Mashpee Math Board.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Don's mic's not on, Scott's mic's not on, Paul's mic's not on. Mine's dead. So, I'd like to have good audio tape. So I'd like to have good audio time. Did you hold the button down for Skyler? You got one? You got two? Skyler's got two.
It's like being at a press conference.
All right, good. So we got, sorry?
Would you mind taking a picture with the school committee and these young?
I wouldn't mind at all. I think it's awesome.
As long as you stay for Skylar.
Yeah.
She'll show you what's next. I don't think I met you. Brendan, and it was Ray, 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 nice to meet you. Delia, special Emma. I saw that. I saw a sneak peek of your thing last night. I asked you. Good job. You guys need to come over in front.
That's good. And then we'll have the kindness show.
I have, I tried.
I'm going to shower.
Let's do it. Download it from the camera and then clip audio with it.
Perfect. Thank you. That was very nice. Thank you. Great job.
You made it to a good meeting.
All right. So without further ado, another exciting time on our agenda is.
They'll watch it on TV, Skylar. They'll watch the big time.
So Skylar, take it away.
Sure. So good evening, happy new year. We're happy to be back. All of our students are preparing for midterm exams later this month. With sports, we've had success with boys' girls' basketball teams at all levels. And we've had some really creative and supportive fan sections this year so far. The theater program is preparing for their Dr. Seuss Space Musical, which will perform in March. Students in AP Army's portfolio are further developing their art centers around the concentration that they selected earlier in the year. We had high school string students traveling the halls before winter break playing festive music, as well as chorus members traveling to the We Are Mashpee store and other Mashpee locations during the holiday cheer. There are students preparing for the science fair, which is January 16th. And we invite you to come and check out our fantastic products that some are currently in their experimental stages, others are wrapping up. Sophomore Samantha Rosum and Evelyn Proventure have been working with the AV Club to produce the Mashpee Minute, which has been a phenomenal way to incorporate students into weekly half, happening dates and build presentations. Sam and Evy, a lot of our students love to watch and love to support our peers. The Maker Space is preparing for the Energy Carnival, which will be here at Quashnet on January 24th with high school students going to the Quashnet and teaching them about energy. Senior seminar, we've had some of our seniors hear back about college admissions, went to the club early. The high school is planning for a trip to Europe for some students who are interested in going, with meetings and information that has begun for France and Italy in April 2021. We've had in-school career students preparing for internships. One senior, Zoe Russell, has started her own lip gloss company. And overall Mashpee's ambitious seniors have been working to prepare for their upcoming futures. I wanted to shout out Anna O'Neill. She's a high school senior and she received the ROTC scholarship, which is a four-year Army Scholarship, and she applied to Holy Cross. And while she's waiting to hear back about her college admissions, this scholarship is a really major accomplishment, about two and a half percent acceptance rate on this and only 2,000 are given out nationally. So after she graduates, she will be a second lieutenant in the Army and shall owe eight years of service. She was selected on the most competitive of the three scholarship boards and she will take military science courses as well as physical training, leadership labs, obstacle courses, and five Ks while she's at college. The Project 351 launch is coming up January 17th and 18th. Last year, Health and Skim came and it was a really awesome opportunity to grasp Project 351's mission. Training for 45 alum on the 17th, that Friday, that I'm one of, that will be for people who are mentoring teams of eighth graders this year. And then eight, the 18th is when everyone is together and we serve in honor of Martin Luther King Day in that weekend. Lastly, we have Mackenzie O'Sullivan, Daisy O'Reilly, and Kayzie Taylor-Woman. We're all accepted into the Southeast Junior Festival 2020, with Daisy and Taylor being first in their chair and their instruments. So thank you.
And is our next Project 351 ambassador Andrew Keller?
Yes, and we are very excited to have him. I've met him a couple times and he's on my team that I'll be leading this year honoring Billy and Mary Starr. And so I'm just very excited. Katrina and I have been planning for him for months.
Where is the Project 351 kickoff?
At the Hall.
Oh, that's great. Are you going again?
I'm planning to. I have a robotics competition that weekend too, but I have to work around. I don't actually. Some people I know do.
What day was that? Was that next weekend?
Yeah.
Yep, it's.
January 17th.
Oh, it's powerful.
So it's just the 18th or is it the 17th?
Yeah, just the 17th is training.
Oh, okay.
Anything else for Ms. Rumpel? Thank you very much, Skylar. It's the new year. Okay, so next item is approval of the December 11, 2019 minutes.
I'm going to approve the December 11 minutes.
Oh, it should bite a cold. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none? Don, honey, go.
Yes.
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 Yes, class unanimous. Port of the superintendent's next on the agenda. Superintendent, take your left.
So we have the report of Principal Colwell Gulf at Coon School, 401 students. This is his December report. If you'll notice, we did add chronic absenteeism for the same period one year prior, just as a reference point. And one of the shout-outs I think we should emphasize on a regular basis is the partnership we have with the US Coast Guard. Their teams come in on a regular basis and actually teach STEM lessons to our second graders and then they are involved with our Maryland Monday runners.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are. And then also, one of the larger events that the school does in terms of service to others and taking care of our families is the Giving Tree Event, which was held in December. And 36 Coons families were supported, which represented 44 students and a very generous community of Mashpee who takes care of, trying to ensure that everyone has a happy holiday season. Any questions on?
Just a quick question on that reference point you added. I know what the chronic absences are, but the attendance rate, is it just for the total month? Like how many are there divided by how many are supposed to be there?
I'm not sure. I don't address actual how it's computed.
Yeah, it's just.
I think it's a strict rate, right?
It depends.
So it's for the month, the school days in the month of December?
Correct.
How many were there versus how many we have enrolled? Okay, all right. Just checking, thank you.
We have Principal Ryan's report for Quashnet School, 465 students in total if you add the district. You can also see her chronic absenteeism between two years. And I think we've had a good amount of conversation about the kindness carousel tonight and it is highlighted in the principal's report. But just to note that the Quashnet School kindness carousel float won the first place at the Mashpee Christmas Parade on December 7th. And definitely we emphasize the efforts of Jane Emery to support programs within this school. She seems to have a project each year and puts 150% of herself into them to make sure she provides opportunities for our kids to help others in their service. So she was very involved with making sure that we got kicked off as well. Any questions on the Quashnet School?
What, what were you guys singing on the picture?
Oh, they were singing about the meatball. Was it? You know that one about the meatball?
On top of spaghetti?
Oh, yeah, on top of spaghetti. That's what they were singing.
I do not know that one.
No, no, that's all.
Come to spaghetti dinner, they do that anyway.
Mrs. Ashes is right here. She knows it quite well.
She was right there.
She looks very enthusiastic.
Yeah, exactly.
And we have the report of Principal Ostrachi for the Mashpee Middle High School. Actually, 737 students, not 736 that you see right there. And just a couple of the highlights on his as well. Every year, they accumulate the GPAs of all of the sports teams and it's interesting on that sports recognition night, they wait to see who's basically the top. It's just fun to watch. But anyway, for this year, the varsity girls' soccer team had the team with the highest GPA. I don't remember who came in second. That's the coveted spot. And then also I want to just highlight the Mashpee Men's Club holds an annual meeting to recognize and celebrate what we call the high five students and then members of the class, the current graduating class, who are high performing and who have accomplishments both academically and in other areas. And they, we go to the meeting and what's most, and this was a rescheduled meeting, so it wasn't probably as well attended as it had, would have been if it was its regular date. But listening to the students share about their educational journeys, their personal lives, the challenges they face, the goals they have, you know, what motivates them is just really inspiring. And then they always get asked some pretty moving questions and it's always interesting to listen to them watch. It's a very proud moment to be able to sit there and watch these students. And so we wanted to thank the Mashpee Men's Club and they also do a scholarship as well. Any questions on?
No, I'm just, I'll call up the after. They're just, on the reference points you added, they're just not the same across all the schools, so maybe we can just make sure.
Any reference points?
Yeah, they're just different on each of the sheets a little bit. So like we don't have, we don't have a comparison year for the Quashnet. We just have 19 at Saint Muntz High School. For us, Coons, we had 819. For not, not for the attendance rate?
Well, they were only, I don't, they were only asked to add the chronic absenteeism comparison because that's what you had asked for. So that would have been my mistake. I don't know why some put the other one on. So do you want the other one on?
I would love the attendance rate. And then the, so we only track the attendance rate. There's, it's separated by school, but the chronic absenteeism is just for the whole middle high school. So do we want to look at that separately or not? You tell me, because I don't know what, how they're looking at us.
Trying to think how Desi recorded that out. Do they do chronic absenteeism breaking the middle school out of the high school? Or is it one?
I think they break it out. We can definitely do that in our future reports if you do wish.
Yeah, we'll make sure it matches with all of the Desi reports.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I have a question. This is more just a, I'm curious. As somebody that's been the teacher and administrator for a long time, what do you see as like the highest absentee month, other than I would assume like June, you know? But, because I would assume December because of the holiday and people then take a few days off here and there. 97% seems amazing.
They're lucky. Not as many vacations. But no, that, even in February, sometimes you see that week leading into February break, often people will choose that to take a vacation. So I think it's about, question the message of the importance of attendance and that certainly helps.
That's right.
And I think sometimes in December, it has to do with when the Christmas parade lands. So when it landed on a Friday, I think everybody felt there was one, so they could stop there. But if it's more like, you have to go to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they might take that off because it's just easier for where their families go.
Okay, thank you.
So as you go with the next page on special education, just to note, the individual school pages don't tie to the special education page.
In terms of?
Of district.
Well, it's a combination of. The two is 23. I don't know if Dr. Perley can address. I know we, we've raised that question before. I think it's the 18 plus. One in the school. They're over 18, but under 22.
So they're included.
They're included in special education, but not in the Mashpee Middle High School numbers. And the 21 and 6 has to be added together, the whole.
So, so part of that is.
So we would want to match up with a number of 27 if we were trying to match these sheets there. So the difference would be those older students.
That are fine.
That aren't in any, yeah, well, they're beyond high school. But we're still responsible. Does anyone have any questions on Dr. Perley's reports?
Do you want to give a brief synopsis on the school district responsibility?
Well, I would ask Dr. Perley to.
So we put that in there because it's super important.
Well, we're trying to sort of use that space to give you two bits of information each month.
I think it took like three years to understand.
It's legal ease, kind of ease, and it does get difficult to understand. I just was using it as a place, like I decided to kind of educate people. And I know it gets confusing sometimes because where parents reside and where students reside and where your parents live in the different towns, it gets kind of confusing about who becomes physically responsible and programmatically responsible. So basically, the first one, the first part of that is basically saying that unless otherwise noted that the student lives in your district, you are financially and programmatically responsible. Sometimes kids become part of DCF custody and their parents leave the state. If a parent lives in Massachusetts and DCF gets custody of that child, so the parents leave the state, that town remains responsible for that child until they become, until they graduate from high school or turn 22. So that was the next part of that. The other part is that sometimes we have kids living in or going to, like for example, say Riverview, whose parents live in New Jersey and kids come to Riverview or, we don't have a special, a private school in Mashpee, but if we use just a good example because it's nearby, we would not be responsible for that child because their parents reside in a different state. So would New Jersey remain responsible for that child? Then, and then it also talks about sometimes when kids are kind of in limbo, moving between district to district, or if a child lives, say, in Mashpee, but they're taken out of their parents' home and put in the custody of DCF, say, in Wareham, sometimes it gets confusing about who will have responsibilities. So the state is just pretty strict on, you know, Mashpee would remain responsible until it's figured out if Wareham is where Mashpee is. So they're just saying a child shouldn't not receive evaluations or IEPs or testing or anything like that when there's confusion between who is responsible or not. But the, the last school district should remain responsible until somebody else is notified that they are. And there's this whole LEA assignment office through the Department of Education and there's a big form to fill out if there's any confusion about where or who should be physically or programmatically responsible. The difference between those two, physically, obviously, we would pay the tuition for the child. Programmatically would be that the district would be responsible for all IEPs, all testing or whatever, all those types of things. So we're, we're responsible for the programming of that child, while sometimes another district might be responsible for the financial impacts. So that happens a lot for school choice students. If we have a student that is school choice in, say, Barnstable, and they come to and they come to our district, but then they need to go to an out of district placement, Mashpee would remain programmatically responsible. So I would still go to all of meetings. We would be responsible for doing the IEP, all the testing, all of that stuff. But Barnstable would pay the tuition to that school. There's like gazillion different types of situations. And I just know that that's sometimes like on my, on my sheet, my report that I give to every month, sometimes that other column or row can get kind of confusing. And that's where a lot of these kind of situations come into play. And then for students who, when, when students have parents that live in different districts, if it's an in district placement, that's school district. So if I have a student who, a parent lives in Barnstable, a parent lives in Mashpee, and the child's in an in district placement, Mashpee is just responsible. If the child then goes out of district, again, gets split between Mashpee and Barnstable, so both districts are being involved. So that was just kind of, I'm trying to, it was, I think I did the ESSA and DCF one last time. So little by little.
So I note you, particularly compared to last year, our district has creeped up. And I realize that there's a potential for a large financial impact on those. And I'm just wondering if, yeah, you denote several different situations, whether or not, you know, particularly as we work to finalize our budget, we take it into account where we are now, relative to what we thought we had, whether with the budget?
For FY21, I always get confused with the SLEs. Yeah, we do, we take into consideration the rate increases for each of the students. And then we look at who we have currently and kind of add that up. And it gets, and then I communicate with Paul. So if I know that somebody's moving in, so say we, the budget is due in January and somebody moves in in July, I let Paul know immediately about that so then he can make the corrections moving forward.
But I guess my question is, to read on January, this would indicate that potentially someone moved in recently. Have we looked at our budget assumptions, or whether those are still sound?
I believe we're still fine for this this year in terms of out of district. We're not going over the budget.
FY21?
FY, oh, FY21?
FY21.
You're getting a crystal ball on this.
Because I know we make certain assumptions.
I do make assumptions.
Yes. If the real world changes until we finalize our FY21 budget, we need to test whether or not our original assumptions are still valid.
You're absolutely right. And we do that to the best, as Dr. Curly had said, we do that to the best of our ability. And, but a perfect example is when we had that, the state child move in, which was a residential, which was $250,000 after the budget was, after the budget was prepared and voted upon. So we didn't, you know, we kind of, we wouldn't take that much money into consideration. But we were fortunate enough to have some students age out. We had some students move out. You know, if you move and you're tied to a collaborator, that town picks it up. The April 1st date does not enter into that. So, and plus, Dr. Curly, the person didn't, wasn't coming until halfway through the year. So we figure 125,000. So we do the best we can. I mean, it's, it's, I didn't expect that child to move in. I didn't have them written in even as a maybe because they came from out of state. So, but we didn't go back to the town and say, oh, here's the situation. We tried to work it within the budget that we already have. And I've always done that.
Now, and I know that's what we do once it's finalized.
Correct.
But we haven't finalized it yet. And we are, obviously, we're gathering more or less the schedule regarding the budget of the next meeting. As we try to finalize it. All I'm asking is, are we still, at least on that one little piece, still comfortable with, you know, our original assumptions based upon what we know as of today, January?
Yeah, I'm fine, yeah. But if somebody moves in tomorrow, I can't, I can't help it.
Yeah, no, I know.
I think, yes, exactly.
You know you can.
I'm sorry, I stepped out of line there.
No. I'm actually giving an olive branch to.
But it does, it does, it can change like that. I mean, but yes, for right now, today.
We had a couple that we didn't expect to go out this year. And we're covering those, so, you know, I want the town to know we're not running backs. And, oh, we had quite of a million dollar move in. We had another kid that had to go out for other reasons. We're handling it within the school budget.
So we're still comfortable?
I'm still comfortable.
With the superintendent's proposed budget?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a good segue too, because I don't think when we, when we originally built the five-year plan, financial plan, at least the working group that I was on, we did not include the estimated increase in these student, out of district tuition increases, nor do we assume any kind of number, steady up or down. So have we done that for the new iteration?
The five-year plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, we always built in, I always built in a percentage on increases on the number of students that we have today, you know, on the team. So I built in that. And, you know, I might have built in a little bit.
Yeah.
Not as much, you know, because.
I still remember making that an actual, physical, bold, written out assumption that we're going to assume that we're going to have this exclamation.
But as far as increases, as far as students aging out, we do track that. I track that with Dr. Curly. So we would move those out, we would come up with another figure, and then we would, we would estimate what the state is, and you know, those, the percentages have to be approved by the state, OSD.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, and it's usually between three and five.
But there's a lot of schools that are going to, like, going up quite a bit. Like, we had one school go up quite, about $50,000 a couple of years ago, remember?
Right.
I mean, so that does, can also happen in a year. We get a notice saying that there's a purchaser, purchaser moving or something like that.
We also, didn't we just have one that filed OSD? You know, they give their reasons and all and so forth and so on in the middle of the year.
Yeah. So there's just like a lot of it.
I know, and it's hard to capture every assumption. I just know, I don't think, remember.
No, but I have built in, we've built in, you know, people going up.
Right, 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 okay.
But again, that can change, you know.
Of course.
Even on the five-year plan. That's why that five-year.
So live in docu, my friend, live in docu.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I appreciate that. More, no less discussion in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Curly.
Also in the packet is the report of Athletic Director Matt Triverry. And just a couple of highlights. Colin Spencer's been named Boston Carol and a Boston Globe All-Scholastic in golf. He was an All-Scholastic last year as well, and it was a tremendous accomplishment. And then the 2019 Falcon Fall Falcon Award winners. This is an award that goes to student athletes who exemplify the qualities and values that define each program. I would just like to read them off just so that they can get a shout out. Varsity Golf is Casey Fitzgerald. Varsity Football, Nolan Lyons. Freshman-Sophomore Football, Kayden Eaton. Middle School Football, Mason Diggins. Varsity Boys Soccer, that's not, it should be Dylan Barger because Danielle's his mother. The Peter Langer JV Boys Soccer is Robbie Foster. Varsity Girls Soccer, Caroline Shields. JV Girls Soccer, Stella Stasay. Middle School Boys Soccer, Mateus Bumiro. Middle School Girls Soccer, Madison Van Huisen. Middle School Cross Country, Charlotte O'Brien. Varsity Field Hockey, Jalen Burke. JV Field Hockey, Ella Portato. Middle School Field Hockey, Taylor Sutherland. Varsity Cheerleading, Kalen Westgate. JV Volleyball, Madeline Cook. And JV Volleyball, Shania Hendricks. So kudos to those students for receiving that recognition. You also have the report of our Outreach Director, Patsy LaFerron. We will be adding a heading to the report in the future reports. I don't know if you have any questions. She delineates her events, the PR and marketing aspect, volunteer engagement, efforts that she's made, and also community engagement. And then she also charts or lists the online social presence. And you can see some, you know, an upward trend. And then we just have the enrollment sheets. We've already gotten over all of the numbers. Any questions? So 1603 is the total.
Uh, I just kept it up on the, sorry, I didn't get a chance to read the outreach one before the meeting. But I did know, just as a town resident, that it was nice to have a couple of articles and things appear about the school that were just for topically, wasn't it? No drama, it was just, you know, some stories. And so I really appreciated that whatever, you know, Patsy LaFerron did to make that happen. Because I think that's the kind of proactive communication that, that's why we have an outreach. And we want to see some of that happening, so I think it's great.
She's, she's doing an excellent job. And she's coming up with a lot of great ideas that are really going to impact students as well.
And I love the art students painting windows, so that was so cool.
I love the things about the high school now too, which they used to do.
Ah, that's a great idea.
Okay, and.
I'm actually going to see if I can entertain. Are you going to move to curriculum?
I'm just going to just say a few other things. Well, I didn't talk, I didn't talk about that.
Could I entertain, motion to table the curriculum update until the next meeting? I just asked for that to happen. It wasn't anything in detail. It was just an update on some standard changes that we had in place and update on wonders. So there wasn't anything time sensitive on it. If anybody had a problem, that's what you made to downstairs. Did you stay up all night preparing at home?
No, it was four bullets, whatever you wanted.
I don't believe it's so, so. Yeah. Motion by Chris, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on tabling the curriculum update agenda topic back? I mean, I was as well, I was trying to maintain our status. We'll make sure that it's on the next agenda on the top and it's all little, new, old business bullying.
And then if maybe we have questions about curriculum, we can send it to you in advance. Because I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda, so maybe I'll come up with something.
Did you not see the agenda before I listened?
Only, only when the packet went up. I'm just saying, when you put it on. Yeah. So I might think of some questions.
So I have a motion by Chris, and it's, I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Nicole? No discussion?
Yeah, well, my only question is, if there's four bullets.
No, it's not four bullets.
You don't include that in the.
That was not my intention. My intention was just to give you an update conversationally. So, because it's not, I mean, I'm really just giving, otherwise it would be an entire packet this thing.
Oh, okay. Oh, that, that's fine, I was just.
But if there's anything in particular you want me to hit, just tell me. And shoot me an email and I'll have to go do it.
Okay.
And this update was not to take place of a curriculum subcommittee meeting. It was just merely some informational for the. Don, how do you feel this?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you. So we'll table the curriculum update for the next meeting. Our next item on the agenda is subcommittee reports, negotiations.
So we have a strategy meeting tomorrow. We're continuing on, we have a third negotiation meeting coming up next week. That's very timely, I just.
No, the following meeting, well, the next meeting is the 23rd. And it's the last meeting that we've started to show.
And that's the only negotiations we're on, or no, you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then for the subcommittee board, you have? The party two. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the working group updates. First one we have on here is outreach.
Do you want me to?
I.
Either you go and I'll fill in, or I can go and you can fill in, whichever you like, please. All I was going to share was, we have a meeting on January 16th is our next meeting. And that's really meant to be finalizing this year's survey questions. We did engage with Panorama. They are a survey company. And they will be handling the survey this year versus the whole survey monkey group. They have a, quite a collection of questions. We're going to try to select ones that sort of most align with what we're trying to capture. And then we can also add on if we want to.
Yeah, and if you guys have ever seen their presentations of either MASC or NSBA, they, one of the advantages of using Panorama is to have national benchmarks. So when you use their questions, you can kind of see how your, those rank compared to other districts. So you kind of have a sense of what a good number is or a bad number is, rather than sort of consider it a vacuum.
A little education focused.
Yeah, well, the company, yeah. They work primarily, I think it was, what was the district that presented it? Framingham presented the last conference we had, and I attended that. But it was nice, the woman who we met with, she actually crosswalked ours. She took our survey and crosswalked it with Panorama questions. So we don't have to kind of noodle around on that stuff. And we don't have to do it. That's the best part. So I can take data analysis off my, off my list for the first time in a few years. So that's great.
Awesome, thanks. Any questions for the outreach group?
Are, are you going to be able to make that one?
Not likely. One o'clock is way too early.
I thought so.
The next is finance, with recommendations for change to the process of school choice funds. The previously approved school choice fund.
So there is a request, what they have covering AP test registration fees for high school students. So maybe this allocated $20,000 for that.
The working.
The working.
It's recommending we allocate. Important words, Don, important words.
Is that just a historical number of AP test takers times the number of the test?
It's the current for this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They reduced all.
And is that?
Comes to 18,550 something or so.
Would I take, what would these $20,000 be for for the AP, the AP students this year?
Yes.
So what do we, do we have to vote on that next meeting or something?
Yeah, because of course.
What's down below is a vote?
Oh, yes, awesome. Yep.
Okay.
And then we put it up for a reading. But this is not a, this is a take from Peter to pay Paul situation, correct?
That is correct.
So where are we getting the $20,000?
We were going to reduce the replacement of the teacher position.
Five twenty? Is that reflected on this somewhere?
No, because you have to decide. The top is where currently everything is situated. And then the working group down below, so that you would have to decide that as a committee that you want to make this change.
And last you recorded out on that was that we didn't need the full allocation. But I can't remember, was 88 what we had originally allocated? Or is that already been adjusted now?
No, the 88,000 would not cover replacing all of the desks.
Right, but.
And after further consulting with the high school principal, he felt that a lot of the teachers would not want to replace the desk. That this was, he would rather have the AP tests paid for than, and then go around and ask the teacher, do you want a new desk or do you need a new desk? Evaluate the desk and then replace it. So this is not something that, you know, we came up with. This was a recommendation from the high school principal, along with our assistant superintendent for curriculum, that this, that a lot of these kids, I think the cost was, I want to say $92. The cost cost is $92 a test, is that about right?
It's either $91 or $92.
$91 and $92 a test. And if, you know, it's. Ninety-one and ninety-two dollars a test. And if, you know, some of the parents can't afford to have the kids take the five AP courses, you know, that's, that's almost.
Oh, you don't need to persuade me on the AP test thing. Uh, it's more, I just was curious, was this number reflected already?
Yeah, so the eighty-eight unfortunately would not cover replacing our own teacher desk and chairs, as we originally were talking to them. At the outset, we, so that was the original attempt, was we were going to replace all of them. Once Paul started looking at what was available, uh, talking to vendors, came back a lot.
I guess I'm, I remember that. I thought there was an interim discussion that we had where I thought you, or maybe it was in the financial working group, had said, hey, you know, we don't really writ large need to replace all these desks and chairs. Some teachers don't want a new chair, they have their own chair, you know, like, so I just wasn't sure what that number was. And if it's gonna be a kind of, hey, sign up if you want a new desk or chair, then do we have any idea what that real number is yet?
For the desk to chair?
Right.
No.
Okay.
No, but even when we were still considering sort of a district-wide approach, and it came up much higher, we then were sort of zero, let's just pick one school to focus on the first wave of this sort of initiative. So it's basically if, if the change is made for the AP, to cover the AP tests, leaving us sixty-eight or maybe sixty-nine thousand, then we'll start to then, knowing that we have that, figure out a way to be as equitable as we can with sort of whether it's all one school, what do you need, or what we want versus. But we do want to make sure that, just because I don't value my teacher's desk and it's old and, you know, hopefully not balanced on a bunch of books or anything, because if I'm leaving and someone else comes in and they don't have a nice desk. So we want to try to make sure we're thinking about that as well.
And this, you know, may be one of those things to consider for a future CIP.
We've put in the CIP, it's not gonna get done until like this week or twenty-five?
No, I know.
Yeah, it's, it's, we have got to start taking ownership of some of these issues. I mean, I'm a hundred percent on board with the AP test registration fee. And I think that's a really great way for us to, to expend some of this cash. I just, you know, I, I just have a problem, this continues to be a living document. We, we voted on it as a committee, we approved it as such, and it's approved, and it's supposed to be, you know, carried out as such, and it's not. So I am interested to see what we're gonna do for sixty-eight thousand dollars if we couldn't replace all the teachers' desks for eighty-eight thousand.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I would like to know too, but I mean, I think that the, we weren't, you know, we know that we weren't being responsive to an identified request from teachers that said, oh my god, my, our desks are falling apart, we need new furniture. That's why I'm very much okay with that moving, because I, I don't have direct knowledge of any problematic desks or chairs, but I assume that our principals do, or, you know, that Paul and the superintendent do. So I'm, I, I guess I'm just kind of wondering, what are we actually doing? Why are we doing desks and chairs if people don't want desks and chairs? Do we know how many people want desks and chairs? And then if that number's actually forty thousand, then, you know, we can kind of play with a few other things. So I'm kind of, it's already January, I'm kind of anxious to figure out what, what that number is. And instead, we're just dialing it back to spend it on other stuff. What's the real furniture number? That's all I, I'm curious about.
I'd have to get that from the principals, that's.
But we, but it was for all the schoo-, it was district-wide when we talked about.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
We wanted to make it equitable for everybody, so everybody had the exact same chair.
Yeah, we do that.
I think, right, the AP decision is more time-sensitive, if we're going to try to have students benefit from that this year. As we get closer to the end of the year, depending on what things are looking like, there might be more opportunities in an operating budget to purchase ten desks or whatever, you know, as we get closer to and more to spending.
Right. You know, me personally, I, I think that it's owed to the committee who approved the priority list at the beginning of this um, entire project, that we have a plan in place to address the stuff that was approved before we changed, changed new stuff. And I'm probably repeating some of the stuff that Nicole said. I mean, twenty thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things, we could take from school choice ad hoc, and if we need, if it was time-sensitive and everyone else had, was on board, and then when we had a plan, we could see if we could still adjust these numbers back and forth, because we, you know, we ended up voting on two hundred and seven thousand dollars for one through nine, not two hundred and seven thousand dollars for anything else we want to bring in front of the committee for the remainder of the year. So, again, a hundred percent on board AP test, if we can figure out a way to pay for it, then let's pay for it.
I, I, I can make a presentation at the next meeting to cover that one twenty thousand dollars.
And if there's a, I mean, if there's a recommendation by the principals, I'm, I think we're all board. No, no, I'm talking about if the school, if the desks and chairs are not something that's, something that's important for the people in the schools, then what is an appropriate, you know, venue? Is it refurbishing the teacher lounges? Is it, uh, you know, is it water bottle dispensers? I mean, what, what can we do with that eighty-eight thousand dollars and improves the quality of life in the schools, instead of taking it and giving it up to somewhere else?
Just a comment, actually just stemming off of that. So I like that idea of potentially just, if we, if we can, and if it's, you know, with our school choice budget, is to just take it from school choice and pay for it. Once we figure out the desk situation, because if you remember, we approved the list up to, so if we don't need that eighty-some thousand, we can just roll that back and kind of surplus it back into what we took down. That way, when we're looking at that list, we can just kind of reevaluate it once and maybe re-vote on it, rather than keep coming back to it.
And I just made one other comment. The, the next meeting falls pretty close to the halfway point for the fiscal, you know, for the school year, fiscal year. So that gives us, gives me a lot of the picture of what we're going in with balance. Mr. Santos, I'm gonna have on the salary side to maybe transfer to the expense side of the budget as requested. Last, you know, June, or July, whatever the date was. So that, that, we can take a look at that, you know, if, uh, you wanna wait until the next meeting, or. I know we could cover the twenty thousand and still leave the eighty-eight out of savings that we have within the budget.
Well, I mean, one of the other parts that's on here was, I remember two, which was returning twenty-five thousand to food services we've all been, and that hasn't happened either.
No, it hasn't.
I mean, um, and I know Paul, um, at the next meeting, I think we're gonna combine this with, um, the finance report for food services, correct?
I have requested to come to food services.
Um, so that we can see where, where they are financially, whether that actually is still needed or not. Because in a vacuum, it's hard enough to decide regarding that. I guess the other point though, um, we don't have that in our packet, and I know Paul should know offhand, how much school choice we have out of this bucket with the two hundred and seven thousand.
It's pretty much right. How much are used?
It was, if I looked at that code word.
Oh, I got that, I got to go there.
Right.
And that, that would be on the record.
It's two fifty, what's two oh seven?
You mean like it's not much art, or is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, you know, I guess I would suggest voting up in the vote until we have that information, so we can make a decision in the next meeting.
You know, I will have a couple of different transfers.
Do we have time on the AP, can we go to do that? Functionally, how's this gonna work, however?
We've, we've got it functionally, yeah. We had a meeting with the director of school counseling, the principal of the middle high school, and Mrs. DeBoer, and me, and there's, I, I mean, I can get into the details of it, but how you transfer the money, it's a student activity issue, but then they, they have it.
My question is, we're not dispensing money to families to reimburse them for costs. The district is covering the cost as registration occurs and for the AP testing.
Not for this year.
We don't have to pay the bill till the end of the year, my understanding. So therefore, the people that have paid, the money went into a student activity account, we're gonna pay it out of that. So that money is still in the student activity accounts. So if the committee votes to pay it, I'm gonna pay it off a line there, just as we have in the past, and at the end of the year, we back out what we expend against, if you remember, against, uh, choice. So if I don't use the five hundred thousand out of choice, they only back out three hundred.
I, I think that, that was.
If you're a family.
Yes, they would.
So explain, so explain it to me, my daughter's an AP testing girl.
Okay.
Whatever you put in, you would receive a check back.
Okay.
And that's happened before.
Okay.
Historical.
From the activity count. So, so when they're paying for the test now, they're paying us? They're not paying some, okay. I was picturing like some testing service.
It will be going to a testing service, but not until May.
I see.
So they hold the money, I believe I know this, they hold the money in the student activity account.
I see.
But you have to put your order in for your AP tests by November?
Uh, this year, it was the fall for the first time, it was generally February, but this year they moved it up.
So you have to get that money in, so you don't have any to order, because we didn't have money to pay for it if they didn't.
And so in this case, if everything goes well at the next meeting, we have our information, and we look at it, we, we allocate twenty thousand from somewhere, that money would be transferred into the student activity account.
No.
Okay, well then I'll step back. At some point, we're gonna have to reimburse everybody that paid this year, right? From that money we just allocated.
Right. So what, what'll happen is, it's in the student activity account now, which Mr. Bellistraci has a checkbook. He's gonna make out sixty checks or whatever to the parents, so you'll get a check that will say, Nashby High School Student Activity Account, all content, our account, because that's where the money went in. What I'll do is, Mr. Bellistraci will bring to the bill in June, and I'll pay the bill out of an appropriate.
No, I got it, okay, that's good, okay.
So unfortunately, the, the, our decision to reimburse for AP tests didn't maybe factor into the calculus of the families who are deciding which ones they were gonna take this year, because we were late.
Right, and the discussion, is it okay if I speak?
Sure.
The discussion we had last month, where we sort of talked about this in depth, was to then build into twenty-one the opportunity for it to be covered, so that any student who's taking an AP test, uh, class, can, is taking that AP test. So that's where the equity piece would come in.
Even though the pay's required, is it too late right now for people to say?
Yeah, they make you order.
Okay, got it, okay.
It's a scam. Don't get me started.
Yeah, I show my.
Okay.
Awesome, awesome discussion. Any other comments about that?
Uh, not the AP testing, but this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. No comments?
Well, I have, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
The AP testing, so is this something that the committee is thinking about is doing on an ongoing basis? So, and if that's true replacement, I think it is, then where would that funding come from in FY twenty-one, twenty-two, so?
It's a decision we'll have to make in the next meeting when we appropriate the money, right? Because I mean, we, we do know that we may get to a point at some strange budget impasse, we don't have school choice funds available. And so I don't think I would be comfortable saying that we're gonna indefinitely support AP. We're gonna definitely, I think I would like to try if we have the funds available.
Well, the question, where are the funds?
Right, right. I mean, I think, I think it may be something like this, you know, I mean, I would love to see the student grants and the teacher grants and stuff like that continue, but we didn't vote to have them continue on forever. I think we voted this year and the next year. I think that'd be a good, perfect thing to put on the list as well, and now the AP test reimbursement would also be on that list.
But you might, so.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you might be on, I mean, we have our FY twenty-one, but as you mentioned, FY twenty-two, it may become something that you, we include in the operating budget of the high school.
Well, right, that, that I guess is where I was headed, is the committee might want to consider incorporating that as an ongoing operating item, similar to other things that we've done in the past, but it started off as school choice.
As a pilot, yeah.
You know, we decided that, you know, school choice was really kind of a one-off situation versus an ongoing situation. That probably is part of our SFP, should be in the operating budget.
You know, it'd be cool if we had a group of people that met to discuss our next year's budget. And then give that twenty thousand to them. I'm just teasing. So the financial working group should, I mean, yeah, yeah, so I mean, the financial working group, I mean, I think for the twenty-two budget, if, if that's the recommendation of the group, I think that would be probably a pretty easy sell, for me.
Well, I mean, we're fortunate in Nashby that we don't charge bus fees or athletic fees, and really, an exam fee is like an academic fee. Why should we have to pay that?
That's a, that's a really good way to put it. And we can also discuss it for this budget, correct? Before we go on.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting. I know, the term is increasing.
No, I'm excited.
I can see it on your face, Chris.
So the question I had about this, um, the, so where are we, is it the finance working group? I don't think I've heard you guys talk about this, but where are we in sort of, um, creating this process for the next budget that's, so we're not, so we're getting information from staff and teachers? We're not just noodling around, coming up with things on our own? Like, where are we in sort of refining that process for next year?
Well, I think it's definitely something that starts with each individual building principal leading the conversation. We, we generally ask for input when the, they're creating their, so grade level teams feed up into, you know, fourth grade decides what they want. And so I think maybe expanding the conversation to think beyond the normal that they always request, thinking a little bit more outside the box, to sort of, you know, in their ideal world, I would like to have these things, and then we can, perhaps they do that at all, but in schools, we can then capture those things sort of as a wishlist, or those forms can also have sort of wish lists can go to that, in the editing form.
And so timing-wise, when would we see that wishlist, or would we? Because we're talking about something that isn't, you're not necessarily building into the budget, that this is opportunities for choice funds to be used for sort of innovations, special projects.
So I feel like this list was sort of crafted at your summer retreat, so having that going into that would be.
And we can add it to the master agenda too, so it's something that we can know, know is coming up.
But I'm assuming you're gonna get that input from staff before the school year ends, so theoretically, we could have it earlier?
As long as, I think personally, as long as we wait till after the CIP is approved, so that we know stuff that doesn't get approved, and we have to see if that's a priority for us to throw into our school choice list. I think between then and now, as long as we give everybody enough notice to sit down and chat about it, we could probably do the school choice discussion any time after that.
We, we had talked last month about having school councils be the avenue through which some of that brainstorming is happening as well.
Like the school council, or like adults?
What?
Could be both.
Oh, not student council, school council, which is that each principal leads, which has teachers, um, community members, it has representatives. I think that was our big conversation last month, was making sure representation happens when these decisions are being made. And the people on the ground who are doing the work are having a really strong voice in terms of you all considering how to strengthen those funds. So school council is a nice way to do that. And maybe monthly, I believe, right?
Are those, so, can I ask a clarifying question? Does scoo-, school councils appointed or elected or?
Elected.
So they've designated these teachers and staff as their representative?
It's not just teachers, it's parents. I used to be on the coon's line.
I was on the high school.
Oh, okay. I skipped right to the school.
Apparently.
But, um, no, I, so the, so those councils, uh, my only question, I guess, is to just, my advocacy to the councils would be, you know, don't just take the will of the people around the table, make sure you go back and
And that's.
ferret out the snarky people and the really happy people, and just, you know, make sure that we don't expose ourselves to like, thinking it's still being made in a vacuum, even though, you know, we're not making decisions. Okay.
So I was just gonna say, I think the key is following kind of the timeline and the schedule that is included in the superintendent's budget meeting.
I never read that page.
For budget development.
It's so dense.
I'm putting it out to you.
I know.
Some page six.
Yes, I see it.
So if those things happen, this coming square, which I think will come soon.
Yeah.
You know, that should be the opportunity for the committee, then early summer.
Is CIP before town meeting?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
CIP is next week.
Okay, okay, so. Okay, okay, so, okay, gotcha.
So I think the key is those meetings and the next development happening, so that we can be aware of some of these things.
Okay, I mostly just wanted to make sure we had it on record that we've been.
No, heck, yeah, and I think.
Moved this process up and.
Yep, I think it should be part of the master agenda at the next, the agenda meeting, superintendent, and I will get it on the master agenda.
Okay.
So that we don't miss it and we, everyone knows it's coming. Sorry, talking about it. And I do have a, speaking of CIP, we do have a planning and construction meeting tomorrow discussing the CIP. Um, I won't have, we won't have a meeting before it's approved, but I'll pass it on to everybody, maybe email what was, unless, those couple of, I see some stuff on here, but like the air conditioning at the Quashet School Laboratory is actually my next year's CIP, not this year's CIP. So, but I'll, I'll shoot that to you guys when it gets approved.
I find this chart to be a little confusing. What are the, what are the colors, man? Why are things blue?
I'm not sure what, what the blue was, but this, like, if you look down here, Mr. DeBora, you'll see that we've indicated Quashet elders.
Oh, you got it right there, sorry.
So that was the original, and I want to change it however we can go to it, but this was newer information based on the DPW's.
Fair enough.
CIP.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, we gotta move on.
Yeah.
So we have some time to do our next budget, our next talk. So, the next item on the agenda is specifically gonna assign unfinished business, one of which is the school committee draft FY twenty goals. And before everybody scours away and hides with the table, um, so speaking with the superintendent at our meeting, discussing, um, what's wrong? Did I skip something?
No.
Discussing, um, what was done at the last meeting, which I apologize for missing. And you designated that we were going to provide representation to the strategic improvement, um, committee council plan group to inform our, on, you know, what we would like to see on the district goal, which I think is awesome. And then in addition, I think that it's important for us to create our own goals, excuse me, that are specifically for the school committee. And that's what this, this whole thing was about. We may or may not get to a vote, but, you know, some of the things we talked about, I, I put them, I sent you guys an email with our, our, our school committee evaluation from last year. So if you saw anything on that evaluation that really concerns you, was a really low number, that maybe we should devise a goal that would address that. Um, I, I mentioned outreach, and one thing that I would love to have a goal about is implementing a social media presence for this official school committee. I think it would be awesome if we had a picture of those kids from at Mashpee School Committee that we're tweeting out or Instagramming or whatever our social media choice is, um, to the world. I see that all the time, and the neat thing about it is that Mask retweets all that stuff. Um, and it gets, it gets kind of more of kind of visibility. We do a lot of really good things in this district, and I think they're kind of lost sometimes on, you know, getting outside of route one fifty mark. So that's what I was kind of, in the think of mine, and I, I just thought, you know, we have fairly good, no, we don't really have a lot of time. But if you have any ideas or somebody thought about it after I sent you the email, let's chat. What you got, Don?
Well, I, I mean, I think some of us submitted, um, proposed goals previously to the committee, so I guess I'm not sure where we're, where we're at and where we're headed.
Well, that was a completely different discussion, these are just goals that you want to do for us to be a better school committee. Because districts.
No, those are, those are, you know, how can this committee do its job better? So, you know, we tabled them because we didn't have a full representation of the committee. And we just kind of, that's languished, I guess. So I'm not sure what you're asking now, which is different from what we did previous.
It didn't languish, the committee refused to make the decision until the last school committee about what directions we wanted to take. The direction that we had at the beginning when everyone submitted the, submitted the goals were goals that we were gonna develop as an entire district. Goals that we, the five people around this table, were going to develop and then present to the leadership just to inform the way that they did the strategic plan. Um, that was clearly not the direction the committee wanted to take, and so we moved it to another direction. And the ultimate direction that I understand from the last meeting was that there'll be two representatives from the school committee on the strategic, what is, what would I call it? What are you gonna call that committee?
Planning for success.
The planning for success committee?
If you just mean.
So the planning for success, um, meeting, which would, which would take it, take place of the, all the goals we submitted, because that information would be presented that way, and we'll do, use it as a, as a typical subcommittee or working group, or there'll be a do-out at every agenda from what's happening at those meetings, and we can make discussions set forward. So, as I said in the email that I sent out, um, this, the only thing we have left to do right now is to have our own individual school committee goals. I am not forcing this on anyone. If the, if the people here want, do not want to do that or don't find that as something that's important, then I have no problem with it. Um, I, I thought it would be interesting to make sure that we had, like I said, the social media, um, I think would be a great goal. We've done some amazing things already this school year that we can capture with goals and we can take to fruition. And these would actually go just until the end of the school year, unless we have one that we want to have longer than that. But the thing was kind of like a filler until the end of the school year, then we have a clean start, and we have the new.
Strategic.
The new strategic, what, you changed it on me?
Well, no, the, the process is planning for success.
Oh, okay. So the, the do-out from the, the planning for success is the strategic plan. Now we have a new strategic plan in place, which now could help us get even better goals for, at the beginning of the school year, school committee goals. So I apologize for the confusion. I know there's been a lot of iterations, iterations with this. Um, again, if there's more information you need from me, if we need to do a template, if we need to do a share-out document like we've done before, where you can do electronic stuff like we did with the big, the group goals, if that would be more amenable to you all, then I have no problem, I'll, I'll put that together. I just don't know if you guys had some ideas in your head about what you think we need to do for the remainder of the year to be better.
I do. I actually submitted my ideas on November twentieth.
To me?
Yes, you and Patty, um, saying that it superseded what I submitted already because I wanted to develop more interim goals for the school year. Um, and I said that I thought we would assign school committee members to the strategic planning process to kind of feed. So I, I guess, when I saw this was on the agenda, I didn't respond to your email because I had already done it.
Well, I, that's two people now that have been confused by my.
Well, I, I mean.
Clearly, un, incorrectly written email, so.
Um, but, so that's fine, I, I, it's not long. Um, I mean, I, uh, you know, I, I like your idea of having, you know, something, um, we basically have, you know, an outreach kind of, um, uh, goal in goal two, which was the enhancing and nurturing effective and collaborative relationships and partnerships with all stakeholders. You know, I would be in favor of retaining that goal and adding some different, um, action steps under that. If, if, um, if the social media one's something that you want to pay for, I, I could be persuaded on that. I, um, had, uh, you know, we've kind of changed, I had originally talked about the family opinion survey results as, you know, the annual review and kind of always keeping that in our, um, in our queue because that's how we're supposed to be evaluating our progress when you're the school committee. Um, but now that might change since we're using Panorama. Um, I also think we should retain some action that we really, you know, in terms of supporting community events and attending cross-district functions and conferences, we really kind of just started that last year as kind of a, um, something that we were trying to accomplish as a group. And I think we made a lot of progress on it, but I want to keep our foot on the gas on that. I want that to be, I want that to be a, a sort of expectation of anybody who sits in this chair, that, that's not something that, you know, that changes. Um, I also, I also had on there to maintain that, that meet and joint session with the tribal council. I could be persuaded that maybe, if that's part of standard operating now, maybe that doesn't need to be an action step for our current year. Um, and then I specifically, like you, I was thinking about things related to Consuelo, and I had in here further support the development of volunteer programs and opportunities to recognize community contributions to MPS. So, a, a way to better cultivate that are all these networks that we've, um, established between the Falcon Friends and the Southport Falcons and all this stuff, and just find a, um, a mechanism to really, again, ramp up our volunteer programs, but also, uh, promote not just what our students are doing, but what volunteers are contributing to our schools, um, through things like our Facebook and social media. So maybe we kind of kill two birds with one stone. And then, um.
See, a lot of these, I think, are part of the strategic, strategic plan, not school committee goals.
Why can't they be?
Because we're trying to differentiate between the two. I thought it was very easy because we could make these very large, wide swath district. If we have something that's, that causes, you know, directly causes the administration to go do something, then that's not a school committee goal, that's a district.
Well, these are, these are action steps I'm talking about, not goal. I mean, the goal is this broad.
Right, right, right.
Um, but I'm just saying, I think we, as a school committee, need a little discreet, you know, in your, to me, in your action steps are things that you can say, by the end of the year, we'll have done this. Um, and so I'm not saying this language on what.
No, I, I know, I know you wrote those for a, a kind of a different, a different process. So, I, I take responsibility that I thought I was making this more efficient, and I clearly did exactly the opposite. And then, if you get something to say, Chris.
No, I mean, I, kind of along the same lines, right? So where I was trying to figure this out is this, was this something separate?
Yeah.
Was it like?
It is, yeah.
Because I, I do agree that, you know, with a lot of what you're saying, where we have to look at how we operate. And, you know, based off of our survey and some other things, kind of have some goals on how we can operate better and things we can do. But where I was a little confused was, was this separate from the goals we were talking about last meeting?
Yeah.
Is this like a separate item that we're looking at, which I would not be opposed to?
Yeah.
Uh, but I wasn't sure if that's where we're going with this, is if we're looking at two separate things.
My vision, which again does deviate from your visions occasionally, so my vision was that they are two distinctly separate forms. Now, they're not gonna be so separate that we're moving in a different direction than the district, that's not what I'm looking at, right? At the end of the day, we're all trying to, we're all pointing at the same, you know, fuzzy dot. But I didn't, I didn't express myself correctly. So, um, would anybody be, um, averse to just stopping where we're, we're at right now? I will consolidate the input that has already been given to me from our previous discussions. Um, we can, and from everyone, we'll put it in a single comment, we can, and we can talk about it in a, a regular type of thing. An actual good, good topic. So that, oh, because a lot of you had to, and I know Don did submit some pretty significant, eight long, like three pages of goals, I don't want to dismiss that. So if you benefit by consolidating, and I'll get it back out to everyone, and we can do it, unfortunately, push this down the road, keep the can one more day.
Okay, I, I feel like this is like, uh.
Or do you want to have a separate meeting and talk about?
I do, because I feel like this is possibly the most inefficient process to actually accomplish what you're setting out to do. And I, I think it's one part, like, yes, there have been a few obstacles thrown in the way, but also, I don't think this venue kind of lends itself.
Well, this, this venue never changes, we're just gonna have an agenda with one, one topic on it.
I'm just.
We still have to be doing it in open meeting, we're just gonna have to have an agenda that has this on it for a long period of time.
Right, that's correct.
And that's, that's fine.
Yeah, but I think maybe we just have it as a stand, you know, it, it just needs to be a conversation about just that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would be game for that.
It's too bad you didn't bring that up when you were just, right? This all could, this all this paint could stop.
I just assumed everyone was gonna set my recommendations so we could move.